Call our work session to order. On the work session agenda tonight, we have approval of the following minutes. Six twelve twenty seventeen and six twenty six twenty seventeen. The second reading on the moratorium and the voting on the signs. Katie Lane update from Ronnie and Corky. Does anybody have anything to say about any of those, the minutes? Is everybody ready for approval on them?
On the first page and the second page. First paragraph. Says three firefighters picked up. It says incident management class. I believe that's incident. And there's an extra word in there. There's one firefighter or two. Just a little information. Next page, you got a long paragraph, right? Long paragraph that says one thousand dollars budget for reimbursement. That should be your first.
Should be yours, I'm sorry.
Reunification.
Oh, okay.
And it should be in that. I just have a question. We're just talking about this next page. We're talking about the supplemental review policy. Should we somehow describe what that is? Or is it an actual title?
What page are you on?
That's the next report page. Next last paragraph.
Okay, yes, I see.
I don't know if I can. It's an actual title for supplemental review policy.
It is. Did you find anything on the twenty-six minutes? Anybody find anything? So do y'all approve with those corrections? Anybody else have a problem doing that? Moratorium. Tony Scott Cornet's going to read the second, and we got to go ahead and vote on that tonight. Okay, Katie Lane, Ronnie, do you have any updates?
I haven't got any projections back yet. I've got guys looking at it. With the weather and stuff, boys can't. I haven't been able to get a prospect very easy. I doubt we got some time.
Do they have? Well, we have not given a notice yet. It's never give us any time. But we need to try and get somebody out there. At least get us some estimates.
I've got them. They've been out there. One of guys been out there for concrete.
You might call them again and try to.
I will. I tried calling one of them today and seeing what was going on.
If you don't mind, try to call them and see if they can hurry along and give us the estimate to us as soon as they possibly can, so that we at least have that.
Right.
Given to them.
Problem is, we're getting too many to do.
Everybody's probably getting too many.
Do we have an update, Tony, on Hickory Valley?
No, we still haven't. We haven't had two complete days.
Without running.
Good weather, we need five. So we're doing all the better.
Would you mind touching bases with him and see if we're still on his list?
I'll touch base with him later.
Okay. Okay, Ronnie, you're going to report back to us next time if you're able to get any kind of estimates or anything. And weekend cleanup?
Yes. Advanced disposal has agreed to do a free weekend cleanup for us.
You don't have to go and hold it. I'm going to tell them.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
I've got everything. Anything but chemicals, tires, liquid chemicals.
Also, I'm glad you did.
And the work session is the police door. Everybody's aware of it. The deed is torn up again. Captain Wells, got the estimate changed for the police door?
I think they did. They did it, please.
Okay, anyway, there's an estimate in here.
There's a G two three.
As to.
And that's a motherboard batteries, which batteries were never in there to begin with. So the building is true. Wants those batteries to go in there. The building could in and out, or piled out.
For some reason, they were never installed.
An hour ago, that whole building.
So is that just? I know we talked about this up there. We didn't talk about how is that just the back door and the hallway door?
Our back door and the. The battery bag, it should cover now.
Cover everything once it goes back.
I don't have a problem with that, but last administration we got into this. I would like to know who this man is. If he has a company name or some way. You know, maybe it's just made out. Glenn's guy. We had an incident that last administration and that we need. He needs to have a name and an address and a phone number.
Glenn's guy, man. We had all the work before. Part of it was.
I don't doubt that at all. We just need something more formal. Yeah, for audit purposes as well.
So we probably need to table that, James, since we don't know the name of the company that's going to be, that's giving us this estimate? Because we can't very well vote on something we don't, you know, a company we don't know anything about.
Can you get that?
Can you get that for Mr. Wells now before the council meeting? Okay, see if you can get that.
I mean, I don't have a problem voting on it. I just need to know. I think we.
As long as we have a company, we can do that.
Actually, would be something if that you approve the company. It's a property that you provide in ways. I think. I would never recommend approving without any, in ways without my, what they're asking me to talk about. Subject to receive it.
Okay, so should we get the chief that we need to itemize? Or we can approve it and then based on the.
Subject to itemizing which.
Because it needs to be fixed. I hate to see us postpone it another.
Absolutely. Just hope it's called it with Brown.
Right. Well, he's getting that information. We, the regional planning commission, we got a statement from them that we owe them two thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars.
Next page in the third. Is that the third quarter of next year, this quarter?
No, it's due, Casey, in October.
Yeah, it's due in October. Or you can do sending annual payments like October.
Yeah, it's on there. October. You can do, we can do it in October. Or we can go ahead and pay it now, or we can do it in installments on. Except, y'all, she got it and we thought we'd break the way of putting it in here. Let's get us a payment. But that's our yearly. But again, we don't have to do anything. It just has to be done by October.
When is most of our tax money coming in?
October starts coming. Y'all want to hold off and pay that in October? It's June.
Yeah, I would do that.
So we'll table that then. Okay, the mayor's breakfast. Bradley Masonary LLC has agreed to sponsor it this time. We just need to decide where we're going to have it at and. Where we're going to get the thing from. Did you check the president?
My wife, my latest daughter.
So do y'all want to have it here again and just have it catered? Well, because I think it's going to be kind of crowded if we have it in the rest of Southland. Especially.
Is there nobody else over there?
Yeah, nobody else. Won't be either.
They're close on Tuesday, aren't they? And they're still close on Tuesday.
I don't know. Is that Bowden Ranch?
Yeah, she said she would close for that week. Kind of.
But she has like two separate dining areas, so we couldn't put all seventy people on a speaker is what I'm thinking.
Well, that's probably has been.
I say we just have it catered here and we'd have no room there. Is that everybody else agreeable to that? I think that's. Especially for going to buy these councilmen and mayors and stuff. We probably would want to get that sent out.
Because that could be the one for Southland.
I guess I think it would be that would be Southland. It would be to have little boxes.
Because she called and I told her I had her.
She gets one prosper having it there and one prosper having it here, didn't she?
Seventy-five dollars more if we had it.
It's worth that. Do you know what that figure was, man?
Like forty-five and seventy-five if you had it.
Is everybody all right with that? Just have it here. Somebody needs to make that motion tonight. ADA compliance, we received a letter from them saying that there was some work that was supposed to have been completed in a certain period of time, and we knew nothing about it. So he's coming out tomorrow. I'm having a meeting with him at one thirty tomorrow, and he's going to go over everything that we need to do to for it to be in compliance. So I will have more reported the next meeting on that. We could not find any kind of paperwork. Casey and I look everywhere as to, all we can find is what the handicapped market was doing by the previous administration, but we could not find any, anything else. But apparently we were supposed to in June, was it in June? We were supposed to have the door fixed for handicap. I mean, a lot of things should have been done.
So who is this?
Uh, I don't know which one's coming. He just said that they would send somebody from the office out to talk to us. I mean, if anybody wants to be here, that's fine, but he's coming out tomorrow at one thirty.
At one thirty?
At one thirty to tell us what all we need to do to make it handicap accessible.
Southland was four eight, and it was seventy-five dollars extra on four eight.
Four eighty and seventy-five?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you figuring more people this time than it was last time?
I think so. So it'll be five fifty-five, seventy-five.
That's four sixty.
Uh.
Six fifty.
I really have too much that I don't have.
I know, I just expect to see what.
What Corky's been sponsoring the last few years.
I don't know. I don't know.
I mean, the mayor, if you want to, if you want to split, we split. You don't have to just, you just said, nobody sponsored it, well, I can sponsor it.
That's not a, I don't have to bear.
No. Just to have the mayor's breakfast here.
Okay, email responses. Casey has brought it to my attention that she don't know when we're receiving emails because a lot of people's not responding back to, we're letting her know that if they've gotten or not. And.
I didn't get the bad pictures.
Oh, you didn't. And see, that's what Casey needs to know because she said that when she's sending out those emails, she has no way of knowing if everybody's got it. So if everybody would just respond back and let her know that they're receiving any emails that she's sending out, also Tommy, because sometimes Tommy sends out the emails instead of Casey. So we need to make sure that everybody is responding back, at least saying, I got it, thank you, I got it, or something. It's just a little button down there. I usually always hit and say, thank you, I got it.
You're going to have a.
I saw it. I got it. You go see what's received, you're red. Have the agenda.
She's not, she's not, she's not sure we're getting this material she's sending out. So if everybody would just say, I got it, thank you, or something, let her know that she has, that she don't have received. Okay, Ms. Emma Owens, our team counsel. She is trying to raise money for the Children's Network, and she's asking for donations. She's going to try to raise five hundred dollars. I made a donation today, so if anybody's interested, you can make whatever what you would like. You know, any kind of donation you would like, if anybody wants to make one. But she's trying to, she said she, I'm writing today in the form that I will be starting Miss Alabama Clemendaries very soon, and as a contest, I have the opportunity to raise money for Children's Miracle Network. By raising, my fundraising goal is five hundred dollars, and every donation, whether it be large or small, makes a huge difference in the life of a child in need. If you would like to help my fundraising efforts and donate to Children's Miracle Network, there are two different options to choose from. To make an online donation, go to missamericaforkids.com, click on search for contestant, and type in Emma Owens. Once my donation page appears, you can click on the page and make your donation. If you prefer to send a check, all you have to do is fill out the donation paper behind this letter and fill out the check. Once the check and the paper are filled out, you can place the check in the envelope that is in this package and place it in the mail. Thank you so much for your support. Your donation will bless so many children and families in need. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to call or email. Thank you and God bless you all. And she put her number down there. So if anybody would like to make a donation to that, you can do so. Casey has the envelope. Or through the online, if you prefer to do that, that's kind of case. I just want to make sure we mentioned that tonight. Also, I spoke with the auditor. They are finished with our audit. He's going to be here at our next meeting. They're binding the audit now. He was waiting on your letter, I think. He got that, so he will be here at our next meeting with our audit. He asked if he wanted, if you wanted him to bring the books and just drop them off, and I told him no, that I would prefer him come before the whole council and explain the whole audit, what was done. I think that it's a pair of dollars, and I think they have a right to know what. Uh huh, uh huh. As to what, you know, founded that audit. So he plans on being at our next meeting. We've never done that before, but I think we need to start doing those kind of things, and I think that. But anyway, he will be at our next meeting, and I just want to let y'all know about that. Billy Murray also, and y'all probably got this in your package, has sent a invitation to the council and the mayor or anybody that would like, for the, he is going to be running. Sheriff Searls is not going to run this time, and he's going to be running, and he's asking for anybody that would be, would like to come to hit this event. It's going to be held at Red Diamond Corporation Headquarters, four hundred Park Avenue, U. Moby, and it's going to be Tuesday, July the eighteenth, twenty seventeen, from six to eight in the evening. And I think that y'all all got one in your packet. Just to let y'all know, James's car is here. It's in Montgomery, and somebody's either got to go pick it up, or they're going to have to, they're going to charge, I think it was a hundred and seventy-two. Is that what the charge was to take it?
A hundred and seventy-two and fifty cents.
If somebody delivers it. James still in here? He was, James said that if he paid somebody to go get it, that he would have to pay two officers. You want to tell them what you told me today, James?
Once you get paid two officers down there, it's going to look like four hours, seven and I said five. Let's go in there, I probably went down there and get it, and then come back.
Let me ask you this question. We're going to be, three of us are going to be going to school on Saturday in Montgomery.
Don't build on Saturday. You can have it Friday.
But it's going to be open on Saturday. We could go down and give them the check, and Tony could drive, probably drive the car back, because he's going to be going.
I'll call him tomorrow to make an arrangement for get the check down there to it. Leave the keys with one salesman there.
Yeah, just ask him if we can do that, because that way it would save us from having to pay that hundred and seventy-two dollars and also having to pay two officers to go down there, because we got schooling on that, on Saturday anyway, and there's going to be three of us going, so some person could, you know, drive.
It's on two thirty-one, eighty-five, it's at one, about two miles down to there.
We could find it. I mean, that wouldn't be no problem. Just find out if somebody's going to be available, and they're going to be open for somebody to do that.
He won't be there. Bridge Park, but the bridge is going to be open. They'll be closed.
Okay, just if you don't mind, if you don't mind asking that, do y'all? Yeah, find out what time they close to. Do you mind doing that, Tony? Would you mind? Hey, your commissioner would get to drive them.
I drive them, give me one that did off the train in Birmingham, they'll go get it.
I'd like to see us try to do that rather than pay either delivery fee or pay two officers to go down there.
Okay, that's all I have tonight on the work session. Does anybody else have anything that they need to add?
Let me step back on the car. Since that's already, we already approved as much of that car. Do we need to do anything?
Only thing we will have to. That's the only thing we'd have to do, is we'd have to approve the one seventy-two fifty if we're going to let them bring it to us.
I mean, we've got thirty-five thousand dollars in there, something like that, on the car. Does it fall under that?
No, this is an additional charge. Everything else is, is what they're going to be putting on the car. This is additional charge for what we've already approved.
It just goes to the coordinator down there, think it's right, if he's been on the.
Yeah.
Right, but I was thinking when we were down. We're.
Katie Lane? We need to get that done now. We're sent. It may be on here already, so I don't know. It should be in your package.
We need to go ahead and get her to add that to the insurance, so that whoever drives it back is going to be covered. So we'll get Casey to do that. Can you do that tomorrow? The new car, it's got the VIN number on this. If you don't mind, call the insurance company, go ahead and get it added to the insurance before whoever goes and gets it.
Tag, boy.
No, you wouldn't get, you wouldn't get a ticket for a tag, but we.
Not going to get that here. Get a ton of work for me.
So, so I'm going to get the seventy-two fifty approved.
On the condition that if, if they're not going to be open. And I don't know, I, he said, James seems to think it would cost us more to send two officers after it then.
Hundred and seventy-two dollars.
What, what car would they carry down there to pick it up with? Police car? One of them?
I had to drive with a charger down there. That's why we got the driver.
Sir?
Charger, that's what you bring down there, because that's how we get the driver.
But it's hundred and seventy-two dollars. Hundred and seventy-two happy for him.
So how much would it cost us if you and a police officer went down there and got it? Since your salary, we would be paying two police officers, we should be paying one.
Two paying man.
Sir?
Still paying man.
I know, but we're going to be paying you whether you're here or whether you're on the road going to get the new car, and then we wouldn't be paying another officer, that's.
What she's saying is you wouldn't be doing anything anyway, I guess.
No, that's not what I'm saying. That's not what I'm saying.
I'm going to get an officer to come in, I can take the outside street to a window. Give me all overtime, you know, you think.
An officer on overtime. Or if we get a part-time, or a part-time guy.
Part-time, part-time, good, full-time job. There were, there were two days a month.
Well, I got to work Friday, right? Go get it. Anyone else Friday wants to go to Montgomery and save the city a hundred and seventy-two dollars?
Can I thank you?
Hey, I paid the money out of my pocket. I'll drive down there.
No, we're trying to save us all a hundred and seventy-two.
I'll tell you what, I'll drive Tony down there one day next week.
If you drove about sixty-five lately. If you drove about sixty-five.
Yeah. I can't do it this week. I can do it next week.
Surely when we spend a twenty-eight thousand dollars, we can send that, we can bring a check list on Saturday, and they can have arrangements, I think.
I hope.
I'll talk to you tomorrow about that.
So y'all want to do, go to prove this on the condition that we can't pick up on Saturday? Is that what y'all would like to do?
Because I think it's, even if you have one person, the cheese down there, you're looking at a hundred and forty bucks.
So we need to have you add that to the agenda, because we do, it wasn't on the agenda.
They have all those places.
You said it was one seventy-two.
At last, I do prefer.
One seventy-two and fifty cents. And picking up.
I ain't been back on there.
Okay, is that all right with everybody else? We're going to add it to the agenda to vote on it, on the condition that this one seventy-two will be, be paid for them to deliver if we can't pick up on those. Okay, does anybody else have anything else?
Oh, I don't, oh, I think Mike passed on. Maybe just a couple.
I think he was going to do that during the council meeting, weren't you, Mike?
I can do it now, don't worry.
I'd rather it be a part of the minutes. If you don't mind, do you mind waiting until the council meeting then, when you do your report?
I mean, if you want to, then we can have discussions during the council meeting.
Is this something we need to discuss in Brooklyn? Could be so. I can pull it in. It's a Saturday.
What has been getting on the state?
Decision. Decision. For the office. Maybe for home. It's going to clarify takes, I guess.
That's, that's the. The threshold is set at nine dollars. But someone has to file the statement, and discuss the third job forms. Exactly. That makes sense.
Do you want, you don't want to go ahead and do it now, or what? Honestly, it's a trivia part of the news.
No, we can discuss it and then put it in the minutes.
All right, Mike, he said, they said, we'll, we put it in the minutes. You can discuss it, and then we'll put it in the minutes.
Whatever. If we need to take any action, we will. I, as y'all know, I've been here twenty-seven years.
Do you don't want to go ahead and do it now, or what, you know, honestly, it's a tricky part for me.
No, we can discuss it and then put it in the minutes.
All right, Mike, he said, they said, well, we, we put it in the minutes, you can discuss it and then we'll put it in the minutes.
Whatever, if we need to take any action, we will.
I, as y'all know, I've been here twenty-seven years. Been here twenty-seven years. Fire, fire chief for the last sixteen years. It's become a financial necessity for me to figure out another income. I was offered another job and I, I went in and took the job. It's another fire department job, be working every third day at this other job. And as y'all know, it's, it's a, it's a hard decision because I've been here for so long, when the department happened, the city didn't have nothing, and helped build the department to what it is today. Of course, I feel like I was instrumental in that making that happen, but I'm not the only one, there was other good guys, and other, other people put a lot of work with me to make things happen. But the, the, for financial reasons, I, I have no choice. To be working every third day, you know, that, that would be a primary job. What I propose to do is just to continue to stay here as fire chief on the days that I'm not there. As most, as some of y'all already know, I worked for the city of Leeds while I was fire chief here, working every third day for ten years. I worked for the city of Springfield every third day while I was fire chief here, and we did it very successfully and progressed forward during that time really well. Until the last five or six years that, you know, I've only been here alone, you know, only. I'd like, propose to go back to doing that. So I can stay here and be part of the city, be part of the fire department, such as that. If I reclassing that, if I do that, I'd be reclassified as a part-time employee like I was before with no benefits. So that'd be almost thirteen thousand dollars worth of savings to the city in, in benefits along. That could be real, reallocated for other things. On budget time.
So are you saying that the twelve thousand savings is from your insurance that you would, when the city would no longer have to carry?
But if we lose, if we lose a full-time person, we're gonna have to hire a full-time person.
No.
No.
You got full shift, don't you? Full shift every day?
Yeah, full shift every day. A lot of other departments do it, Riverside does it, Moody does it, Cordova does it, Concord does it, several other departments do it as well, very successfully.
So are you saying us losing you as a full-time employee won't impact the department?
The impact will be minimal, I'll be gone every third day. But they'll be still working, you'll still be doing forty hours or two, or same number of shifts if you, men do, you'll. Not, not, it'll be a little bit less, depends on what calls them during the week, then I'll still be on call on the weekends like I always am, I'm answering calls at night and on the weekends now.
But if you're over there working and you get called from over here, then that's gonna be a conflict with your full-time job.
It'll.
You'll have an officer in charge.
There's an officer, there's an officer, a qualified person here in the city of twenty-four hours a day.
As long as it's scheduled, he says, did you, last time we talked, somehow I know that you'll be able to know when you're gonna be here, a year ahead or two years ahead or something. The, the schedule will be worked out, he has off time anyway, it just changed the time, time a bit off time, is the way it sounds to me, instead of being here from.
No, 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 he, he will be a part-time employee.
I understood that, but how, how much is part-time? How, how do we qualify him as being part-time? Okay, so how many hours you propose to work a week?
Well, it fluctuates, some days I'd be gone two days a week and some days I'd be gone one day a week.
You, you made, you said that you had worked before at other departments that hadn't affected.
Right.
How many years back with that, because I know, you know, we had the boom, the housing boom and everything, and it, when you was working the other jobs, did we have as many citizens there here then as, as we do now?
City slowed down since that period in Brooklyn. That was when the boom was going on, from ninety-six to two thousand and six, that's city of Leeds, and then two more years, the city of Springfield.
So how many days a week would you actually be, I don't know, it's one day there a week and then sometimes it's two, how many would you be working here during the week?
It would fluctuate.
So if you're, if you're working one day out there, you're working six days a year, if you're working two out there, you're working five here?
Like we did it before, every day that I wasn't here, wasn't there during the week, I would be here and on call on weekends and weekends.
So you're either gonna be working three or four days a week, you're gonna be on call on weekends.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, would you be hourly?
Be a minimum, a minimum of three days a week, minimum.
Would you be hourly or exempt?
Well, that's something we gotta come to, that's something we have to come to the agreement on.
And a part-time employee wouldn't be, they would not be able to get vacation or sick days, or the way our handbook reads.
Right.
Well, if I understood, you work one day over there, then how many days are you off over there?
Every third day, so two days between every, every third day. Every week it's, it's a different, it changes every week.
Okay, so you got one on and three off?
Two off.
Two off.
Would you not have time to do some downtime too, because you would probably be doing twenty-four hour shifts, right?
It's not, I did it for twelve years here.
Anybody else have any?
I'm.
So are we, and I think somebody asked us, might go around here and answer, are you open, would you be paid hourly under this scenario, or how would you be paid?
I don't have a problem with that, if we wanna, you know, go from salary to pay, I mean, to hourly, I have no problem with that, you know, like I said, we guys just sit down and come up with that. And we, maybe, I'm, I'm going in there, almost what I make of here after being here twenty-six years. With getting credit and with a couple of your, with credit for experience.
And, and, and when do you start this new job?
They haven't given me a start date yet, but not, not this week, but sometime the following week.
I think if it's agreeable to everybody else and the end of him, that we try it on a temporary basis and if it works out okay, if it doesn't bother us.
Our first obligation is to the public, we gotta make sure that they are covered, that the city's covered, that we're not gonna have any problems with, um.
I understand that.
You know, getting our paramedics or getting somebody out, you know, if there's an emergency or whatever, so our first responsibility is to, to the public. And you said you did this before the previous administrations?
Yes, did it twelve years total, that's cheap. During, during the boom and explosion.
But you didn't do it last administration.
No, not the last, very last administration, no.
I was gonna say, there's, there's a lot to process and I hate, I hate to hear that because you've been here for a long time and I hate.
I was hearing that most of the water system was put in, I know every inch of the water systems, the trucks, the equipment, the territory, half the people are ago. Through the twenty-seven years, I can pretty much drive down the street and say, I've been in that house, that house, that house, that house, I've been up on the side of that mountain, that mountain.
There's a lot of history there, a lot of knowledge, it's gonna be difficult.
Ceased at that timeframe and the over that long, it would have still contributed to RSA.
Would probably be contributing there.
Yeah, but I, I'd wanna contribute to RSA, I'd be crazy enough to, that's my term.
Yeah, that's my assumption as well.
But they would do the matching and all over there, well, does that take it off a lot?
RSA rules say if you even, every calendar year, if you go over, if you exceed thirty-two hours in any major year in that calendar year, you automatically have to contribute for the entire year and you have to match. So you're still gonna have to do that here, just.
Yeah, our part-time employees are matching that.
Good, I mean, that's, that's a safety, a safety way.
All, all, all employees in the city are, are paying in the retirement system and matching that, all, even whether if they work.
Good.
One, one hour, one day a week, they're still, they're still doing that.
Anybody else have any more questions, Mike?
It may be, I don't know, his money situation is none of my business, but maybe when we get our budgets straightened out, we can, uh, address pay scale and compare our town to other towns, if we need to pay more, pay more.
We could, we can't compete with pale city in the bigger cities, we don't have, we don't have revenue, we don't have.
Compared to other towns our size.
The tax base and stuff, you know, bring in that, that kind of revenue.
Look at our budget.
We, we just have to pay what we can afford to pay, and I know they didn't get a raise this last year.
It's not, it's not because I won't leave, it's, it's, it's simple math, bill versus pay.
I understand, if your family comes first, you gotta support your family.
With a job like this, you know, that's usually why a fire chief gets paid a decent, pretty good salary, and, and police chief as well, because of different hours and everything they work, stuff like that. But the pay here doesn't, doesn't match that, that's not being ugly, that's, you know.
Historically, firemen have had other jobs, I mean, not just here, they all pay, there are some in.
But the problem is though, he's not just a fireman, he's a chief, he's a chief.
Okay. So what are you looking at, what are you looking for us to do tonight, for us to be the scientist tonight, or just?
I'm giving, I'm giving my notice, because I, I got.
Right, I understand.
But I'm just saying, I'd like to work out something where I can continue to work here.
I, I think it's definitely a lot to digest, I think it's a lot for us to think about and, and try to process everything, the pros and the cons for, for you, for us, for the city, the city as well. And, and try to come up with.
I think, like you're saying, it's too much for us all to deal with right now. Leave things the way they are, if he's gonna do it, he knows what days he gotta have them there covered, and let's try it for a month or two months and.
The problem is, we have to treat everybody, we've got, we've got another chief and we got, you know, that, that if everyone we allow one to do, then we're gonna have to.
And I would be willing to give the police chief the same consideration, I don't see how we can give him, anybody a fair judgment tonight, tell him that he can't keep his job.
I don't think so either, I think this is something that we need to do some investigation out again too.
Have a little bit of time to.
I just wanna make sure that our public gets covered because, I mean, that's our first obligation, I, I understand my situation.
He's saying he will have qualified people here all the time, and he's not here twenty-four hours a day anyway, I mean, you know, we've always got qualified people on, on the clock here. I don't know what to do either.
I would just make a suggestion that just give us some time to process.
We may just have to call a special meeting for, for next week or something, but he's got two weeks before he starts, so we may just have to call a special meeting, I think we need to have some time.
I, I didn't know anything about this.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, I can do it in touch or.
I found out today, Mike, Mike told me today that, that he had taken another job.
And this off, this offer came in about a week ago and I, I, you know, I thought about it and thought about it, prayed about it, I mean, it's not easy to see. Like I said, they thought of leaving already, you know.
Does anybody have any objections to us giving it a week and then maybe have to call a special meeting because we're gonna have to decide before, you know, he takes, until he said two weeks, week after next, you said?
Yeah, they didn't give me an exact start date yet.
I think the next council meeting will be soon enough without the next, I mean.
Okay, WR with everybody else, the next council meeting?
Yeah, unless something pops up, we need to, you know.
If he decides to, if they call him in, then we're gonna have to do a, meet and go ahead and make a decision. Right.
No, I'm still have chief.
He's not resigning, that's what he's saying, he's not resigning.
I don't wanna resign, we just gotta work out how we can make it work.
We'll ask him to resign if we can't do any, you know, if we can't deal with what, with what's going on, but, I mean, we'll ask him to resign, he's, he's wanting to keep his job.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I thought that's the subject that he wanted, he was going.
Yeah, we may need to negotiate his pay, you know, if he's going to thirty-two hours, he'll have to understand, there'll be a bit of a pay cut, is that okay, or do you think we'll work something out?
Yeah, we gotta know, we gotta first decide if we're going to, if we can work with a part-time chief, then we gotta decide, if we decide that, then we gotta know what the cause of it is, you know, what he have to have.
And that's what I'm saying, we can't digest all that tonight.
Like I said, there's other departments that are doing it very successfully, Riverside, Moody, Desert Town, St. Clair County alone.
Moody's chief is not a full-time chief?
I mean, you know, as long as there's a president set or, you know, it wouldn't, you know, just.
We just don't have anything, we have a president set, we've never, for my knowledge, it's not, it's not a thing in the handbook that I, that I've ever seen.
Well, I mean, before we had a full-time chief, we had a volunteer chief and then we had a part-time chief and we worked up to a full-time, I hate to go back to.
That's what I'm saying.
Part-time, but if it's the best we can do, you know.
Well, I would just ask for time to process it and just.
Well, let's just move along then and then we'll, we'll bring this up at the next meeting unless he gets called before then, but we gotta have some time to, if we decide not to, that we want it full-time, we're gonna have some time to, to, you know, look for a chief or maybe, I asked him today if anybody in that department back there might be interested, if the council did not agree for, for us to have a part-time chief, if there was anybody back there, he said that nobody was interested.
Most of the guys back there are making more money, their primary job, the chief, is here.
Okay, we'll move along then, is there anything else, the library, have you got something?
Yes, I've got a little bit.
Thank you, Mike.
I've got a little bit of an update, and just to back up and recap a couple of things that we appreciate all you being here tonight, we have an opportunity to be given to us the assets of a library in St. Clair County. Given to us as in free, computers, books, bookshelves, copy machine, fax machine, that library will be disassembled at the end of September. So we have met with a, an IT guy to see what it would cost us to wire the room across the hall for a library, trying to keep it in-house because we, we just got to start the library on a chewy string budget since we don't, we've never budgeted for this. And so the librarian that works there is interested in coming to work for us. We have, we have talked about joining with Margaret on this venture because Margaret and Argo are the only municipalities in St. Clair County that doesn't have a library. So this is a grand opportunity for us to get a lot of assets free. That's the good side, the bad side is we haven't budgeted for a library. And Cowan, having her own business and knowing about salaries, we have figured up a budget for an employee, for the librarian, and that's at eleven dollars an hour. And that salary comes to about twenty-two thousand dollars, that includes her insurance, her taxes, everything that the city would have to pay, and then Margaret would also pay for part of that. There's a lot of details that I won't get into, but if anybody wants to know any more details, if you'll catch me after the meeting, I'd be glad to talk to any of you about it. The IT guy said, high-end estimate for him would be around fifteen hundred dollars. So in the city allowing us to house the library in this building, then that would help us budget-wise as far as utilities and rent, and things like that. So we can get some monetary donations, I'm praying, maybe through the county, through our senator, maybe through legislature, I've contacted a couple of these people, and they have, they've made unofficial verbal donations or obligations or commitments, thank you, I was looking for that word. And also, our attorney has volunteered to draft a resolution, free of charge, he also lives in Argo. And he, he's, he has said that his, he felt like his firm would also make a donation. So that's a lot for us to digest, but in, in my figures, we're gonna have to come up with around fourteen thousand dollars. And that, I'm talking shoestring budget, I'm talking, we're gonna have to have some painters in there to be creative and to make it look like a library. So I just wanna keep the city abreast of where we are, and ask that you pray that this project comes to duration, if that's what God has planned for these two communities. And if you would like to make a donation, it is tax deductible, and you can make that to the city and earmark it for the library funds. So right now, we're just in the planning, I'm just collecting information to let the mayor and council know where we're at on that, and, and that decision will be made later. That library will close September first, and they will begin to box everything up and get it ready for us to move over here if we, if this project goes through, and we can find the funding to do that. So I'm excited about it, but the money's got to be there. So we just need to...
I'd like to back up in just a minute, you said that we, that all the, the stuff that we would be getting from the libraries free of us, but you forgot to mention that we would get at, what, that some of those other libraries in front of us, that we get some...
Yes, I talked to the librarian in Raglan, and all they want is the children's computer. One of our representatives has stated that he has some discretionary funds that have to be spent on children. So the money that he has verbally said that he could give us, I'm kinda in my mind earmarked for the kids' department. So we'll be able to replace that child's computer, a children's computer, with that money, with that donation. And then the Raglan librarian said that they needed adjustable bookshelves. That library, if you've ever been in the library by the courthouse in Asheville, it is full, it is so full, you can hardly walk in it. So even with those two libraries taking what they want from there, I think we're still gonna have more stuff that we can fit in this, in this room. So that's not, you don't have any questions? I appreciate so far, I appreciate so far, all of the support from all the city council, and I understand that...
We might all support it, I don't know how many there are, but it's not a hundred percent...
No, we haven't even voted right now, we're just collecting...
We don't have our budget for next year, we don't know if we can afford it, we got department heads back there that are underpaid.
Right now, we're just collecting information, and...
I understand. But it keeps going on and on and on, without any approval.
You just don't get, well, I'm not gonna ask for a vote until I know as much information, I know as much information to you as I...
You're on your soapbox, you know, pushing it to everybody else, until you know if it's feasible or not.
Well, I'm gonna get feedback, well, we need to get feedback from the citizens, is what I'm thinking, I mean, why, why are we here if their opinions don't matter? And if we don't tell them, when they're here, what we've got in the workings, and what we're thinking about, and what, what our opportunities are, then we can't expect...
We got roads that need stuff too, they need...
Three things you have to...
I'm all for a library, when we can afford a library, if we determine we can afford a library, I'm all for it.
Well, that's, that's what, that's what I'm working towards, is the financing for the library. And it's not every day that you have an opportunity for this kind of assets to be given to you.
We need to know what we're getting to, it's gonna be picked over stuff, I can just tell.
It's not gonna be picked over stuff, I promise you. Even if they picked over, if they got thirteen thousand books, and the other two libraries, whose, whose libraries are already full of books, and newer computers than what they have in Asheville, why would they take...
Three things you have to... I think I've said too much. Anybody else have anything else, or she was just really basic, giving us an update?
Yeah, I like saying, I like saying, I'm, you know, I'm in the same boat somewhat, as far as, I've got city numbers first, but I think this is the only way we can get to the numbers, is to hear...
Yeah, we need to know if it's feasible before we...
Without these kind of reports we can, so I think it's, that's good, though. We don't, we're not asked to make any jokes right now, just being here, here the facts.
Anybody have anything else?